The Board of Education has made a recognition. Now, I would like to break the news. The Department of Education. So we have a moment please. Mr. Thor.
Here.
Dr. Love.
Here.
Mrs. Mallon.
Here.
Mrs. Mandala.
Here.
Mr. Mill.
Here.
Mrs. Ottersen. And Mr. Thor did send me a text and said, "I'm trapped, we'll be here shortly." Mr. Bonjumani.
President.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
The former Mr. President shall be right in the moving class. My pledge to allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we introduce you to the more students in the room.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright lights and bright stars blew the bale of air clear? All the raindrops we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? It proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land, o'er the stream, and the home of the brave?
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to give you certificates to you. I'm going to call you Tanner Hodgkin.
Tanner Hodgkin. Anya Corey. Vanessa Quallin. Michael Dianusio. Leila Bryan.
Alright, let's hear it. Alright, so again, I want to thank you all who have come and attended. We also recognize our ESY program and the community partnership that has made a success. Mr. Sol, would you like to take a moment?
Yes, thank you, sir. It's my pleasure to take an opportunity tonight and recognize some of the fine work that took place. We have a video prepared, Miss Candler will lead us into that in just a second. But it's always great when we have the opportunity to recognize the work that's happening. We're at our schools in partnership with so many folks in the community. So this evening is a great honor, Miss Candler, to be able to stand as our people service city overseas, the ESY program. Thank you for tonight's guests.
Thank you, Ms. Marcella. We're pleased tonight to have Miss Madhav here with us, the director of our summer school year program. I don't know how many years ago they did it, she's been doing it, but always working very hard trying to bring new things in for our students to enjoy during the summer, in addition to the academic work that they do over there. She has some recognitions to give out from some of the mentors that participated this summer with our students, some volunteers from the community that participated. And then she also has a video to share with us that's a little different than the videos you've seen in the past. In the past, you've seen a compilation of pictures from the summer of our students. But this year, she's going to be sharing with you some work that some of our students did during the summer as one of their projects in the class that they were attending. And I think they'll really enjoy it. So I'd really like Miss Madhav to speak further about that. So if you would, please come on and share what you've celebrated.
Good evening. My name is Jan Madhav, and I'm really so proud and honored to be here tonight to recognize our ESY program. This summer... Thank you, okay, that's better. This summer, once again, I had the opportunity to work with amazing staff and amazing students as the director of the Howard Township Center School Year Program at Memorial School. I would first like to thank the custodial staff at Memorial, led by Harold Watts, and our maintenance department, led by Jimmy Rafferty, for really their hard work and dedication in really transforming Memorial into a pre-K to A building. And because we got out of school so late this year, we really did not have that much time, so it really was just less than two weeks. And it was really kind of remarkable how everybody really tripped in and was able to get the building ready. And it was ready for the kids, so again, it's a village for sure. So just a little bit about our summer school year program. It really provides our students with disabilities an opportunity to maintain the progress that they acquire during the regular school year. The teachers and support staff at ESY, they worked tirelessly for six weeks in the summer to engage students in academic and social activities in order to prevent the regression of learned skills. The dedication of our staff is truly inspiring, and I am really so grateful to have the opportunity to once again work with them. I know their students have benefited greatly from their hard work, so again, I would thank them a million times, but in front of all, we would want to thank them all again. In order to enhance our educational program, we are extremely fortunate to have had several volunteers and donations that we will be recognizing this evening. This included student mentors working in the classrooms. Some are currently in our middle schools, some were in our middle schools that are now high school and have come back. And they've worked in our classrooms from pre-K through A3. The volunteers assisted students with wooden building kits. We have therapy dogs and their handlers. And this year, we would like to continue our physical education program, our technology program, and STEM program. During the summer, students worked on motor skills, they worked on hands-on and integrated activities, and various computer skills and programs with the support of their teachers at their house. And additionally, we do receive donations from local businesses and organizations. So this year, we did things a little bit differently. We had students in our social skills program work on a broadcast. So their responsibility was to approach students in the building, be involved with the teachers in the classrooms in many different ways to enhance their social skills and to really interact and get a feel of the building. So I'm really excited to share this video with you. And we have one of our stars here tonight, Mr. Ethan. So he worked really, really hard with one of his classmates, Yusef, who unfortunately is not here tonight. But they worked really hard and they've got a really great experience being able to interact with other students from all grade levels. So, and I would also like to really thank Ms. Russo, who's our social skills teacher, and Ms. Dachshund, who was our technology teacher, who really worked really closely with the students to make sure that they were supported and all the work that they were doing was really meaningful, so I was really excited. So without further ado, if we could take a few minutes to show the video before we do our recognitions.
Hello, and welcome to ESY. My name is Yusef.
And my name is...
We are all looking at Howard School and Howard County, and we are worried on the importance of good social skills.
You may wonder what that means. Well, social skills have to do with everyday behaviors.
Those important things of having manners and following your anger, and for members of these communities, pray.
Our friends at ESY are learning to become good at appropriate social skills, and we are excited to introduce them to you. Come join us as we go live to ESY and visit some of our friends and friends.
Hi, so we're at the Hall of Fame of Howard School, and I'm wondering what we do when you get angry.
Do you think about it first, or do you start after you yell?
I'm not a DSA, or remember any of my friends' skills.
Let's go hear what they have to say.
Hi, my name is Yusef.
What's your name?
I'm just named, and my name is...
And I was learning what you do when you get angry.
I usually wait until a person or a family member is mean. And I usually say something, and I'm not...
No, no, no idea.
Hi, what's your name?
My name is Sebarea.
What do you do when you get angry?
I was a piece of gum.
Excellent idea.
Hi, my name is Ethan, what's your name?
I'm Ethan.
Dante, what do you do when you get angry?
I usually just talk to my head, and I just want to calm down a little bit.
I have a deeper, more point. Great ideas. I need to answer a question.
Yes.
What do you do when you get angry?
To get too loud, um, burst up, and then walk away, and then hug you.
I'll learn that idea.
Thank you.
Remember, if you're angry and you know it, it's okay to say. I admit, it's okay to say, I am really sad. But you can hurt others, it's not okay to fight or yell. If you're angry and you know it, work through it like you heard from our friend at ESY.
Wow, you did, those kids have some bad ideas.
Thanks for it, Yusef.
Now, I'll go find another classroom and see other kids using the manners.
Okay, Dante, you've been a good idea. Wow, a student I had entered the building, he saw this group of students walking proudly to the hall in the next day line. There, as we looked into this classroom, we noticed students raising their hands instead of throwing out. That was a group of students who were sitting quietly all listening to the story. And when this young lady had to fall, she used her elbow to cover her mouth so no turds would stray. Look at the behavior of these people. What example of good manners would you want from them?
I would say those kids at ESY, certainly other than that, they could teach all of us a thing, on to about appropriate social skills and good manners.
If everyone would live by that example, the road would be a better place. A sure one. Well, that'll happen number today from all of us here at ESY. Thanks for tuning in, and have a great day.
Miss Madhav, how's it going?
Good morning, yes.
I'm so glad we have one of the stars here tonight as well.
Thank you, you did such a great job, we're so proud.
We appreciate all the students involved, how impressive the Board of Education is.
I definitely will, thank you.
And we all could learn things.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I would like to ask Miss Mallon and Mr. Bonjumani to join you in the recording of the recognition. We have some experts praise.
I was about to say, somebody with a background in television, I enjoyed that quite a bit.
Thank you. Got that, Ethan? I really can't take that much credit, they really did all the work, but it was really, really great. Really great to see how they interacted with the other students and the responsibility of sharing all of that with the whole program. Okay, so without further ado, we would like to thank each of the volunteers and donors for their efforts and dedication to our students. We do have quite a few volunteers. Unfortunately, it's a busy time of year and only a few are here tonight, but we will make sure that they receive their certificates and the recognition, of course. So our first volunteer is Gianna Dowdick. One of our other volunteers is Victoria Martin-Quix. Okay, so that is all we have here tonight, but I will call, first you want to call their names? Sure. We'll take a picture and then I'll call the other volunteer names. Because some of our other volunteers are also students. Olivia Moran, Nicole Iacono, Chris Iacono, Mia Suarez, Katie and her therapy dog, Sticks, Anastasia Naristis, Katie Clayes, Ethan Tartaglia, Caroline Hill, Sydney Hill, Leanne McMahon. And we had donations from the Howard Township Home Depot. So I thank everybody again for their dedication to the program. It was another wonderful summer, and thank you all for your support. And we'll do one more recognition just for Mr. Ema. So Ethan, can you come on up and just get another round of applause for all your amazing hard work and dedication to these people? We're here.
We'll see him on...
Okay, so with your permission, sir, I'll continue on?
Yes.
I think that concludes our recognition for this evening, and it really helps. I like the wonderful job done by our center program and all the staff that are there. So thank you, congratulations.
Be careful. Whatever you'd like.
Do you wish to recess to exec?
Yeah.
And will you resent and then come back for remarks after that?
Yes.
So the Board will be in need of an exec after a two-minute recess. The issues for the topics this evening will be a hit report, a labor update, and a contract lease negotiation discussion. Please note the motion printed in the agenda, but considering the executive session, the Board will go to exec and return shortly. Thanks. As the Board and Administration take their places in the Devis. It's now time for the formal address. Moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Mill, checked by Ms. Mallon. Ready to take a run, sir?
Please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Mallon.
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Dr. Love.
Yes.
Mrs. Mandala.
Yes.
Mr. Ottersen.
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Mr. Bonjumani.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien is presently away from the table, and as best as possible, favor, no votes. Correspondence and support has received, will be noted for the record. Is now time for the balance of the Board President's comments. This is coming for today. Sorry, sir?
Which I believe is past today, so with your permission, sir.
Go right ahead, sir.
I'll be brief.
Okay.
Listen, I'm going to be very brief, but I want to first off, on behalf of the Board of Education, want to take my footprints remarks to extend a sincere thank you to our staff for your opening. You know, we had a great pre-Ks opening week, I believe, and one of the things that really struck me was that it doesn't get real until that first day when the bus holds up and the kids get off. And I know that from all reports, we had an incredible opening, and through the hard work of our staff and prepared to provide the best educational environment for the children of our community. So Mr. Sol, would you please pass that? Thank you, sincere thank you, and to the members of your staff. And I believe we have tonight a special time of about four goals and some other things, but I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Sol, before we jump right in.
Great, thank you, sir. I'll continue with the balance of my report as well. So we are now in October, as you all know, and October's a busy month in schools across our state, so we do various recognitions throughout the month of October. Obviously, press camp awareness month, and I noticed that Mr. Miller certainly, he's a step ahead of us. I was going to invite the Board and senior admin on our meeting at 17 to, you know, wear some level of pink. We'll have records available, as always, during our 17th meeting of October, we would recognize by our show of support by wearing pink, press camp awareness and the importance of that awareness. Our first week in October is a week of respect. There's lots of activities happening throughout the building. Seen in the polls and social media, Stomach Hello, which has come out of Sandy Hook Group from Newtown, Connecticut, after their situation, and really received well, and really proud of that work that's going on around, just simply greeting each other and students in a way that builds respect. Five conventions, the second week, we have school violence awareness week. In the third week, we have national school bus safety later in October, and Red Ribbon Week, and I didn't even stutter on that one, Red Ribbon Week starts the week of the 23rd. So there's a lot of recognitions and awareness that gets raised on the month of October. Our school fully participates. I believe, Ms. Stevenson, I sent out the schedule to the Board in terms of inviting people to see some of the activities. I would encourage you that once you look at it, if there's something you want to see, contact my office, Ms. Stevenson, and we'll make sure that the school is ready to receive you and make sure that you're fully included in having the opportunity to see these wonderful activities. If you have not yet received that, let me know, I'll make sure that it goes out first thing in the morning, but I believe that that was sent out. I am really pleased to inform the Board or confirm with the Board that Chief Krugrich of the Howard Township Police Department has added a full-time SRO to the K8. There was some conversation about this. So Jay Higgins is a SWAT officer, he's been designated to be a SRO, a school SWAT officer, along with Mr. Quaid, dedicated solely to the K district. Us, so I'm extremely appreciative for Chief Krugrich and the Department to continue to support the school's safety and to this community. So I wanted to make sure that there was awareness with that. You can see this evening, the apparatus here, we're experimenting, as we had discussed, with a lot of pre-video footage that could eventually be live streamed. So this is a pilot, this is some of our professional development equipment, and we wanted to see it work in a large setting, so we're using that equipment tonight, and we'll report back at our next meeting to see if this is a viable solution to what we're trying to accomplish there. I have to echo Mr. O'Brien's words about our school opening. I must tell you that my fifth school opening is your superintendent, and we were faced with some unique challenges this year. We had an Adelphi and Gribling school, Adelphi and Gribble school, we had problems with our chillers, we had rented some equipment to assist them in trying to keep them climate controlled, we're facing negative degrees on opening day, you'll remember that. We had the general concerns that go along with that. We had new transportation software for routing and new bus stops. We had the transition to Adermark as our food service provider, and a bunch of other scenarios that as superintendent, I said, "This is going to be a tough opening." I knew we were prepared, and I knew we did everything from the building level and the administrative and board levels, but there were some factors there, that there was a new misdoing. Previous evening, who has served as 11 years as secretary of the superintendent, both Dr. Gold and Natalie, was astonished that our phone did not ring once on that day to field a complaint. Not once. It was the first time, I do believe, I do believe we're having phone issues now, I do believe that in our recall, it was the first time ever that we did not get one call. I did hear a male about a bus situation. I did get an email about a bus situation, but it was a thank you for the problem being remediated. I know that there was a lot of things happening in surrounding districts that perhaps stole some of the attention, but for what we were up against, I can't tell you how proud I am. And that happens by having great people in places where children are, such as our crowd professionals, teaching staff, studio staff, GNG, or bus workers. It was just a team effort. And I'm going a little long because it's important to recognize the work that went into the building administration and not one complaint. I keep my fingers crossed that next year could be half as good, right? But that doesn't mean we're not without challenges, we're continuing to work RUSAS. But I can't tell you how proud I am as superintendent, hashtag proud as superintendent, about the work that was happening throughout the month of September to make sure our launch was successful. And kudos to all involved. So I wanted to take a minute to do that. Hashtag NJDOE Bolton Conference, for those that follow on social media. The Department of Education just said, send us a picture of your Bolton boards throughout your schools with the hashtag NJDOE Bolton. It was just a school spirit and welcoming back social media campaign that the department launched. And what the department said is the commissioner will randomly select a winner from all the entries and he'll come and visit the school district. So I said, that's a great idea. Let's show school spirit, show the community that our buildings are purified and beautiful bulletins exist, ready to receive students and get excited about the school year. So I sent it out to the board, say NJDOE is on this, you know, if you want to participate, go ahead and do it. So, you know, this is how we do things that way. So we kind of participated and when the commissioner and the department said he's going to draw the winner on Facebook Live at 2:00 on a certain next... Gee, I'll tell you, let's see, you know. So I tuned in and the commissioner is there on Facebook Live and he has his three buckets. So he announces that there were so many entries, he's going to pick three from each region, North, Central, and South. And he'll come out to all three schools, he'd say hello, it'd be great. So he gets to the, he does the North, goes nice and he gets to Central, they're hallowing his eyes. And he says, you know, we see that there are a lot of entries here. Let's go with four entries to be fair in the Central region. So he pulls out the first one and it's a Newberry Culver's. I'm like, wow, we got one. So he goes, all right, I'm coming out. And next thing, he picks out the second one, Gribbling School. It's Barsheluna's. Is that right? It was also out. Goes in, picks the third one, Gribbling School. Another one from Gribbling School, made my job easier. Go out to one school, see, pick two, Newbury, one's home. He goes, good thing I'm doing four, I'm going to get deep. And there goes the commissioner's hand to the bottom of the bucket and he pulls out, ridden town. So it means we... He immediately texted me when he hung up, this is a former colleague from our own county, he said, you made that look ridden. I said, sorry, you asked us to what? This is Howard Township, we only do things one way. So a background of commissioner coming, his staff is ranking that, and he'll visit four, at least three of our schools. And we'll see if we can't convince him, spend a little extra time and see the great work that's happening. But it speaks to the spirit, it speaks to the wonderful folks that are in our buildings and celebrating what's happening and shining that light, shining that light on all that is good in Howard Township. So as much as it was a random, of course, the two that you just said, Mr. Solow, I think I should play longer, right? So I'm excited to share, the commissioner will be coming to take care of that. So merely exciting news, as you all know, and this is our first meeting, I think you're aware of the announcement as a board, but for our community, if you're not following on social media, you should be. But let me share with you this exciting news. Thirty-five schools statewide, thirty-five schools received future-ready silver status, silver certification. It's the newest level, the most highest accredited level that this organization, the Department of Education, New Jersey School Boards and NJIT has a combined effort issue. There was a thing that was older, platinum, it's only silver and bronze now, the original level is bronze. Thirty-five schools received it and we have 12 schools in Howard and each and every one of them received that certification. So once again, it talks in the diligence, the commitment that our staff has, in this particular case, in this angles leadership. And we're very fortunate and we will be celebrated and receive these recognition at the New Jersey School Board's office later this month. So we're very excited about that. I received an email joining Ocean First Foundation, Ocean First Bank's foundation at a grant awards dinner last night. I didn't respond and I received a second email, Mr. Solow will be coming, so I thought I'd get interested. I knew we had a few entries. So I said, sure, I'll go. So last night, it was close enough, it was here at Eagle Oaks, Howard, the statewide Ocean First Foundation's dinner. And it was with such excitement that I learned last night, two of our schools received $10,000 grants for their proposals entered. They gave out 25 statewide and a set number of those were designated just for high school. So it was even a smaller pool when you think about the folks that won. We were able to win two, we had four entries, we won two. And the other two entries received a $500 Amazon gift card to start their program, their proposal. So we're truly excited about the staff's willingness to go out and find grants and then the success rate. And if you remember, most recently, we won one a few years ago, most recently, at Memorial School in the Stendbad Innovation Stations, was an outgrowth in part due to the Ocean First grant. So that was awesome and we continue to seek ways to help bring innovative programs through our community. Mondays, October 8th, Columbus Day, we're closed for students. It is a day of professional learning here. I have the opportunity to present my convocation, my welcome back to staff. That will be happening at middle school staff at 8:30 start. Of course, the board is invited to be in attendance. Ms. Stevenson will follow up with all of you and see who will be in attendance so we can make sure we get you in and out as quickly and as respectfully as possible. If you would like to spend the beginning portion of the day with us, I know that it's certainly always something I appreciate seeing in the audience and I know many of our staff likes to see the board's engagement. So again, we'll send out that invitation to this Monday, mark your calendars. Mr. President will now hand around the proposed goals that are for our district goals. These are goals designed by administration that focuses on the work that we've been talking about. I wanted to share it with you. If anyone should have questions about those goals, please email me directly, not as a whole group because we don't want to be deliberate when we're not in session. But you can email me directly. If there's not, if there are no outstanding questions, we will look to move these to our next agenda. We work collaboratively with our leadership team, senior admin team, develop these goals and we think they speak directly to the work that we have been focusing on. I know that there's been a lot of talk, and may have some sango, about our new website. It's really going well. There are some interactive apps that are coming and guaranteeing engagement. Those are not launched yet because they're still migrating much of the information over and replacing our old system. I think our topic is sometime in early winter, right, Andrew?
Yeah.
Yeah, so after the new year, the town new year, we should be starting to release that information. We will be doing a full-blown demonstration of the website at Community Interaction next Tuesday. Mr. Van Vliet is here today. So I invite anyone to come out to Community Interaction to see that and we'll address any questions about those other issues at that time. I'll also ask Mr. President to hand around the, we're back in school, so it's the time of year where I can make my update on, my monthly update on suspensions. There were four out of school and one new school suspension throughout the month of September. I must remind the board that one of these incidents happened on the last day of school last year, it was carryover. So it's actually just for a new basket and that, that report is coming around to your information. And sir, the vote to respect the time, that includes my report, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solow. I can sort of echo your report. Congratulations again to our district on all the accomplishments, the grants, the awards. What's that hashtag you like to call these? Okay, welcome. Thanks, sir. I believe we are ready for the next speaker.
Yes, it is now time for the updates and the liaison reports, sir.
Okay, very good. I will start on my left, Mr. Durbin, any policy?
Yes. Just following up on, there's always comment about, you know, the grant from First, Ocean First, with the SENSUP grant. As we know, that was a follow-up to the grant that the HDEF or Howard County Education Foundation gave for that purpose and then Ocean First followed up. And again, we see the multiplier of that. It was immediately outside of the HDEF, gearing up for this upcoming year. And again, we recognize the outstanding work that our educators do in this district in coming up with innovative programming to give more to our children and our students and implement and provide that. And the foundation, you know, through the Splinters Board, plus the administration, you know, makes that possible. So that's great.
Well, I think that kudos to the HDEF because these friends of the district have been supportive of education and providing more opportunities for basic learning. And I think you're very, very appreciative of our...
As far as the policy committee, there's no report at this moment. We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. And we'll see when the next meeting will be held to check that out.
We're just waiting for the agenda.
Those things come when they come and they handle. So if I may give a short report of the legislative advocacy. And I might ask, with your permissions, I give a fairly short report, but I asked Mr. Miller to help on this. We met recently and one of the issues we talked about was park. And of course, many of the issues connected with park, it could be solved for now, so we don't have to go through them again. But what we noticed back then was that there were some questions with the state legislature committees and actually with the State Board of Education that coming forth with regulations. And again, just before we get started, Mr. Miller was noting that there have been some changes today with developments. So with your permission, he can give that part of the report.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Miller. Second, the New Jersey State Board of Education has proposed regulation changes to assessment and graduation requirements for veterans. Changes that mean that students in classes of 2021 and beyond will have to take the Algebra I and Centrory Language Arts考试 test, will not need to pass them. They're willing to try, they said they'll take musical alternatives available that will available to 2019 and 20, which include SAT, ACT, PSAT, Acuplacer, and portfolio option. This will reduce the amount that the high school test from six to four. So really, the only thing that really affects us is the Algebra I test for some of our students that do take, will still need to take it at the end of their program. But to pass high school, they will not need to pass.
Mr. Durbin, I know publicly I'd be aware of one of the things that this board has been advocating for in consultation with our superintendent has been a reduction in frequency of parking. And that was something that I think was well understood to be an important component of our advocacy. What are we seeing in terms of future developments around standardized testing? How does that...
Well, I mean, I like the point you made that we can continue to monitor and make our case because again, I'm saying something that our board adopted, a policy position, a letter, we sent it to the commissioner. We said that legislators, a number of us, for example, were at a program with many key legislators in the state, program responsive by school boards and PDAs. And Ms. Mallie spoke at the end, we have our position. And again, I'm hoping to be able, we are going to say that in a situation such as a district like ours where the test results show quite a bit of accomplishment, we shouldn't have the frequency that we see now with those assessments. Again, Mr. Solow points out all the time, Mr. President points out all the time. We have assessments at all times and that's exactly the point. Teachers are able to make those assessments, our students get a sense of where they are, the parents are followed through with that, and we can address the situation at every moment to help the children to learn. And our program, again, the point we pointed out is that the kinds of assessments we have, including portfolios and all sorts of assessments, allow us to provide that rich curriculum that goes beyond the basics of arithmetic and language arts to also see the kind of accomplishments our students are doing in music and art and literature and social studies, in science, in technology. So your point, getting back to your point, I think you're sort of giving us a charge and we can continue to make that advocacy because we still believe in it.
I think if we continue to press that issue in the proper balance, there's a need for assessment, there's a need for data. There's also a need for understanding when we should be educating and when we should be assessing. And I think that balance is to be struck, I agree.
I just wanted to add that we should continue, but bigger picture is federal government because for the deal for New Jersey to request a change, even though the state's out of control, the federal government has to approve that later. So, you know, we may want to take it to the next level because that's really, you know, the end of the road. The state's still not controlled, whatever changes they make, that's a passive approval.
Well, I may just make a note, you know, coming back on the board, I've been on years ago, coming back on last year, I had the opportunity with members, you know, of this board to go down to Washington for the advocacy last year, you know, with Ms. Mallie, with Mr. Van Vliet, with Mr. Miller. And again, I see that on the list of items tonight is bring that up to the board. And maybe that's the place that we can, again, make that...
I think Senator Booker, members, and Congressman Smith, who represent us, I agree. Well, any other Congressmen, we can put them all in a conversation, but we should hear our review and we should be advocating for the benefits and insurance programs.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Well, it's interesting, one of the things that we all received is we get the updates from National School Board daily. And it was just in their email that we received today that Fetha DeVos has written in Hampshire, Green Lights, participating in ESSA's Innovative Assessment Pilot. They're the second state that's going to be approved in terms of determining what type of performance-based assessments. They do certain grades, how they report it out, how they gauge it, how they give the information to the National Association. It will be interesting just to follow up and continue to keep an eye on that. You know, if they're doing it with New Hampshire, certainly in terms of where New Jersey stands on the ranking, you would think that they would look at a state like New Jersey to pilot something like that. They'll be interested to keep an eye on it, I agree.
Just one other call about Mr. O'Brien, you made the point about being able to represent our position. And last year, I hope again it will be the same. This year, we were able to sit in a room with the staff from Senator Booker and Senator Nance to make our case on different things. So hopefully we can have...
Oh, we're on topic, you guys are experiencing, you're not going up there. Yes. Problems don't disappear.
Now, there's one other area that we focus on, and we're not here making any discrimination out of things that we would like to call, all the board members on the call, and through the Legislative Advocacy Committee, we began to take note of the report noted as the path to progress, New Jersey economic fiscal policy work approved. The report was issued in August this year. Senator Sweeney, the Senate President, with a bipartisan group of legislators from both the Senate and the Assembly, from both sides of the aisle, with many top experts in the state, looked at a whole series of issues of great magnitude about taxes and pensions and benefits and the like. In embedded in this are some major educational issues. And I'd just like to cite a couple of things that we are interested in. Two particular ones in this major report. One is the recommendation that there should be a merger of all elementary and middle school districts into K-12 systems. Plus additional point may be established, county-wise school district pilot holders. Well, we didn't spend that much time talking about this, but the, I think, I'm not expressing it, but all of us, people with a lot of knowledge here, that this isn't something that necessarily makes much sense here.
I mean, they want to do it, they just...
Yeah, I think a whole few years back, we were at this regional high school district. We have six high schools, we have eight communities, we have eight K-8 communities. We have one of the best schools with the greatest possibilities... of the best schools with the greatest possibilities for potential for our students. And I looked at a little bit of this now, and my own opinion here, as others would speak far better on this than I can, but a couple of points about problems in some districts, but perhaps in regional districts, some of the schools that are descending districts, their curriculums aren't maybe at the same level and all that. But I'm going to, again, say my own thing. If it ain't broke, come fix it, and this is a great place to look. So again, that's not to say that anything is happening, but it's something to follow. And Mr. Sanders and I were reading last night with the foundation, and following it, we just got into a conversation with one of the board members of the foundation, who was a former board member of this board and head on our town council now. And she pointed, Mr. Biden, she pointed out that on Monday, Senator Sweeney and some of the legislators and people on that workforce were meeting in Monmouth County with municipal officials, which is all good, and apparently they're going to county to county. I just hope that there'll be a follow-up, and I imagine it might be well at the school level, so that our superintendent system, superintendent of the board can have a chance to hear from them and also speak to them.
I think at the end of the day, we all know how that works when someone 10,000 miles away tries to tell you how to run the district vehicles. The impact of Department of Education, federal level on school districts plus country, we had enough, and some of the overreach and poor education and lack of understanding of those issues facing each individual community, I think, is a certain amount of advocacy and efficiency that comes from certain aspects of operations. When it comes down to education, it's a community driven project. And I think the fact that we here as a community focus on our kids because they're our kids and are interested in their results and we're committed to that, that passion, that commitment, and the team that works through the district staff to implement that policy is something I don't think can be replicated on a statewide level because the business breaks down the connection. I think it's important to maintain that local flavor, and I think we have, as I said, I think the board would probably welcome anyone else to join our district. But to become part of a larger super district, I think is problematic because it ignores the reality that each community has its own set of factors that need to be, and we can't lose sight of that. My opinion, yes.
Thank you, sir. We shouldn't lose sight of the global impact of such a generic statement that was made by the Senate President. He clearly was looking at a spreadsheet and qualitative information. Let's not lose sight of the fine work that's happening in our regional district, that our students federate from choice programs, academy programs, and meeting with those kids. So what exists here in real regional sending districts and the regional district itself is a unique example of how it actually works well. And I think that, and I can tell you that I have a lot of concern around the climate in the state right now. Politicians have their hands in education more than I've seen in recent years. And I would suggest that our advocacy committee has some heavy-duty work ahead of itself. It is sweeping wheels, getting oil lately, it seems. So I would encourage this board and this community to stay active with its elected officials because there's a new governor, and I don't think anyone told Steve Sweeney what his name was, because, and I don't mean that negatively, but, you know, Mr. Sweeney has a lot of authority right now, and he is the one who's proposing some of the things that Mr. Durham spoke of. But I can tell you that in the funding formula changes that we saw, it was the school districts that advocated that it appears got some movement in positive direction, and I heard that in smaller circles as well. So I would encourage the advocacy committee of this board to make sure that it's advocating loudly and clearly on issues that impact the quality of education for our students in this community.
Mr. Solak, I couldn't agree with you more. We're very fortunate to have great partners in our real regional. Our children benefit from having programs across many disciplines that they can apply for. They get opportunities to, you know, aspire to things that would not necessarily be possible if they were in a single district. So from the perspective of opportunity and advantage to our students, I think real regional serve our students in all the communities exceptionally well. And the idea that even though we are a little machine, maybe we need to start sweeping a little more and making a little more noise is, I think, a message we get while we're clear as we don't have.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
I was going to add to your report, but I went to the county association leadership meeting on September 22nd, and this discussion had come up about consolidation in the county district. And New Jersey School Board has met at the Senate Jardis Office staff and then legislative staff, and as of right now, it looks like this is going to devolve terribly only. The district government wants to participate, would position their local community to put it on the ballot. So for us, we have to go on all our seven districts, local ballot, all of them have to, those residents would have to agree. And then with the real regional high school district, then consolidation is a good. I haven't seen that something in the near future at all for us.
Sure, yeah.
It was detected a couple of years ago, and it can work.
Actually, I don't know if Mr. Durham was going to mention this, but the night before, Mr. Miller was at that meeting, I was at New Jersey School Board's board director's meeting, and Mike Ranchick, who's the director of governmental relations there, Mike went through a whole litany of the different things that they were talking to, you know, the state about. His staff is really in the governmental office daily, you know, trying to follow up on the educational issues. There's a good at the other that. The good is that he's keenly aware of the stuff that's happening in the state, but New Jersey School Boards doesn't represent every district in the state. So what happens is they need to occasionally back items that may be good for 70%, but not necessarily progress. One of the things that we as a committee had thought about advocacy is, and most of us know Mike, those of us who read the meeting, asking Mike for a private meeting between our committee and he, you know, whether it be out in Trent or inviting here, but we'd really like to discuss with him what some of our concerns are. For example, in the past, when we had asked that, the thing about the testing, we had made sure that Mike's office so that he could try to follow up on it. But I think as a committee, we will be reaching out to Mr. Ranchick and just asking him to meet with us privately, letting him know where we're looking at.
Mr. Durham, you nailed it, and you said the name's broken. Sorry, I think I.
Yes.
Is it like a follow-up on Mr. Bonjani?
How does that?
You know, New Jersey School Board has been a wonderful organization for this community. We certainly partner with them. We're very active, like they have workshops, as you know, and I have the greatest respect for their work. However, I do see flawed in their backing vesting. I think that was a monumental misstep on their leadership spot, and if it provided the opportunity to attend such a meeting, you should know before you invited that I would share that with them. It was troubling to see school boards support legislation that impacted negatively on a large number of its paying members. They should have remained neutral, because there were whizzes and wuzzies, and I really think that was a misstep to the point where some of my colleagues across this district are asking their board not to pay their dues until they're at some level of, and I'm not suggesting that, I think they're a fine organization, they're misstep here, but I don't think that they should get a pass. I think our board should let them know how displeased we are, that they have supporting of us too, they have blanket supporting, they have vocal supporting of that. Because the impact to one of its large members here in Howard Township was negative, and it was negative to many of Monmouth County's districts. Certainly, we see what the regional district, high school district is facing, we know what Manalipin and Marver are facing, our neighbors in Neptune. So there was some really heavy-handed budgeting decisions that impacted negatively on our communities, and they came out in favor of that. So that's concerning, and if you want me to raise that, School Board, sir, you're not leaving. I will not attend to me, but if you invite me, I will have to speak my mind.
I think, I think we have consensus from the board to have, Mr. Solak, draft a concern initiative to be purged in a draft letter that can be issued by this board. We can review it and then send it off, you know, and I'm actually related to this opportunity. But I certainly think, based on what I've heard from our superintendent, if the board agrees that this is something that will be a measure, then we should make school boards aware of it. Do we have consensus in support of that? And then draft a communication that details the concerns and the reasons why it was a strong measure for our district.
I would agree with doing that, and not only that, but I would go even a step further in that, as I've done before, I would be willing to share at the board director's meeting. It did come, that item did come up at the board director's meeting, and I'll let it be there for right now, but I think it would be something to share not only with the school boards, but with the other directors from the state.
I think if I had consensus from the board, I'll ask Mr. Solak to draft language to a letter that I can sign from this board to be delivered by Mr. Bonjani, the appropriate forms, and Mr. Miller, and Mr. Durham, and, you know, whoever it is, I'm going to go to tell them.
And I was just talking about an extension of that, perhaps there might be a little revision of the letter, but again, it's something we always talk about, of having that a letter of that nature submitted to our legislators and our board.
I think, I think, send it to whoever needs to get the message, this was a mistake, and they feel strongly about it, but let's bring that back to the board, you know, or if, you know, through electronic communication, we can share with the board, and then we can send to the board, see if there are no objections, I'll sign it, and have it.
Yes, can you just add that a C C to the Monmouth County's board office?
Absolutely. You know, I mean, respectfully ask that our advocacy chair and our, our liaison collect a list of C Cs that we can then draft a letter and have it sent out to the appropriate parts.
So, good, thank you. All right, just one more part of the report, I have a very long. It's okay, but I think the conversation is important, and the next topic perhaps is to cite the one other major area of recommendations in that path to progress report that I think we are a little more supportive of, quite a bit more. And that has to do with the area of state funding for special education. And again, we don't have to go into the description of the payments for extraordinary special education, other certifications are supposed to be given more state funding, they're not getting the full allotment, but the recommendation is to try and move the direction of covering these costs. So certainly, that's something that's in the. There's one other area we talked about extensively with the committee, and Mr. Sanders, you know, working with our committee, and that's the area of the whole hearing process and the office of the administrative board judges. The, the idea that you were reforming in the report, reform the hearing process so that the OAL people are better trained, that they focus, certain people should focus especially and specifically on special education cases. And the idea is, and we've had a discussion about this in a merit for luminary way, this question where this district is, that, and we're not talking so much about how, we've been to sessions like Monmouth County, Mount Ocean County School Boards, meetings and the like, and we've had some here in Howell, talking about the state, where so often what happens is there's an adversarial process. And the idea is what we're really trying to do is assure that each child gets the best possible education, parents are satisfied, that the educators in the districts who have the same goals and interests as children and their parents can work together. And this is something certainly in this report that they need to recognize. So that's something we'd like to explore a little bit.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Ms. Bell.
First, I'd like to say, forgive my voice, we had some very exciting sound games the last couple days. Operation Sydney on September 21st. And first, I had a discussion with Food Services Department. As I reported at the last meeting, interactive menu features is now authorized, as well as a frequently asked questions section. Food has been well received so far. The September numbers are almost doubled from last year, but we will have an updated report on October 15th for this September number, so it's, it will be quite positive.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Have they been able to review kind of like the lines of each of the schools that are in the reports? Some days it's been a little, some days it's moved smoothly, but some days it's been a backup and gives, like, a good, it's a good problem to have, it's, it's hot.
Yes.
Service.
Yes. Yes. You think. Mr. Sanders, I have a question.
Yes, we're continuing to work on it, some of it with staffing, and they continue to hire more. The background check was backed up a little bit at the beginning of September, but they're addressing that, and it's, it's being resolved. Pizza Day is always going to be a week. I don't think that's a, well, middle school pizza's available, at the elementary, pizza day is a week. So, but we are addressing the lines, and they're, they're improving.
Okay, the next item on the agenda was a transportation update. The shared services agreement with Wal Township was discussed, and since our committee, Wal Board of Ed has met and we have to approve the agreement, our committee recommends that Howell could do it as well on the agenda tonight, 6:07. Basically, this is for the Wal Township Board of Education to utilize an area of Howell Township's transportation facility with their buses and two trailers for staff. It starts September 29th. And during the discussions, several common questions are brought up, for instance, arguing of the days off, which are similar in both, in both districts, about, you know, backup, we could be plugging lots, and of course, hell buses would come first, we could, first in Wal's second. As far as the traffic with the township, basically the Wal buses, when they pull out, they'll have to go left and go right into Wal, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't affect traffic in the township. And it will not affect, impact that Howell bus times because their start is, is it earlier or later than ours?
Their start time is slightly earlier, but similar, however, because they're going further, they will be leaving Owl Yard early. So they, they won't be leaving at the same time, the departure will be Saturday.
Departure will be Saturday, and we have a room, and they need a place, so it's basically over a win-win situation there. Then this aspect of transportation presented capabilities of the new Zohar system, including rechargeable ones, which allow drivers to perform their vehicle safety inspections more efficiently, and the transportation department to monitor groups and create reports for a variety of key areas such as idle time, speed, time spent in each stop, et cetera. The system will enable us to continue efficiency and costly measures, keeping safety as our number one priority. One of those measures this year is to require the bus signs and follow through on that requirement for all middle schools. Basically, instead of keeping every bus waiting in case someone needs it, only the buses that have to sign up stay. Or if only one or two students sign up, then that bus would be, they would switch to another bus. It's going very well. We have been able to release several lessons from both schools because of not being signed up or being needed, and that saving us cost saving right there. The other item that we discussed was the bridge repair on Rant Town Road, and communicate with families about the bus changes once it is open. The best guess, and Mr. Durham referred that to the meeting today, and Mr. Sanders, that is the end of October, but no supply that we've ordered and no work hasn't started, so I'm not feeling very confident about that guess at this point, if that's what we're being given, it's the only information we have at the time, correct?
Yes, I believe your confidence level being low is quite accurate.
Okay, finally, the bill requiring lap and shoulders seatbelts on all new bus was passed into law, but it does not apply to buses already on the road, only new buses. Since the length of the bus lasts 15 years, it could take up to that long before all school buses on the road throughout the state are equipped with new restreins. There's still no legislation that requires children to wear them, however. We will continue to strongly recommend that all children are seated and are wearing seatbelts for the duration of their trips to and from school as always.
You have this on your case.
Yes, certainly, if someone would need to follow up on that.
You could.
Right.
I've been on the.
Yes, we have been. All right, and Mr. Sanders reported that the September training for driver-to-mates, which included special needs training provided by the Grand Hines with the Monmouth County Sheriff's Department occurred, and it went very well. Many driver-to-mates commented. Many drivers of these commented how helpful the information provided to us, and we're going to discuss that. We finished the meeting with a decent update and then some very exciting news. I love this. The solar upgrades will be completed and generated solar by December first. And all the schools will have mounted kiosks, basically the screen T V and a media center with a cafe to show what we are saving with the solar panels. So it will be a learning situation for the kids there.
I'm sure it's just a minor correction, but since the meeting, I think some of the principals have considered their four years as well. So the kiosks might be in the four years as well.
Okay.
So we're working with science supervisor, with Dina and some other people to see where it would be best for both the college and students. So it may be in the four years.
Oh, no, that's great, thank you. Okay, the other very exciting news is current H I R workup are scheduled. And we are saying through our Dena will be targeted to have A C in the classrooms by this spring, and all the other remaining equivalents in time until September twenty nineteen. So, very exciting. The residents saw lighting time, had a few things that had to be finished at the meeting. I'm sure that's been completed by now?
Yes, they're, they've recorded a hundred percent, we corrected them to ninety-five. They're, they're working towards ninety-nine at this moment, but it's going early.
Okay, awesome. So that concludes my operations report, but I also wanted to report that I attended the Sustainable Journey to School Session provided by the N J S B I on Wednesdays, September twenty-sixth. This interactive session guided participants through each action step that can be taken by schools and districts to achieve bronze and silver certification in sustainability. We currently have two of our schools registered, and one of them, Memorial, reached bronze certification in August, and I want to acknowledge their efforts in reaching that certification level. I hope Mr. Sanz Act and Mr. Sol's support, I believe we can reach that goal for the eleven other schools and then move on to silver certification for them all as well. Each building is already doing such great work in this area. And now that the district will have solar running, I can feel strongly that we need to celebrate all those efforts and acquire the recognition that they also originally deserve. Thank you. Just a question regarding the Project Luster list, we received a list of our students from S B I who are participating in that program and also have their detail on the classrooms.
The D C A's on, I think, the list was supposed to be received, I'll check to that. It is not coming to me, but I'll check tomorrow. All right. I'll listen to them.
Okay. Pretty active in their book.
Yes.
I think they're, they're.
The numbers that we save once solar is fully online in December, I think would be more special when it's spring and if more sunlight and the numbers increase, we can share that maybe on the, on the new website, or this new website. I think that would actually publicly really benefit from seeing some of the measures that that operations committee has made to save.
You got a great idea, that maybe what we do is, is, uh, mess our technologies up as possible, put like a little banner around that, plus the advocacy savings across the district.
I'm sorry, Mr. Van, but I've seen Mr. Sanz act have a finger up there.
The, the kiosk that is now, he was referring to the kind of software, and it does push to our website, and it'll have factoids like, uh, how many equivalents cars have been removed, how many trees could have been.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just talking, how, the equivalent of how many trees freshening in the air and those kind of things. And that does push to the, and that's where we're talking with the science supervisor about the kiosks, and although I didn't mention it, it also pushes to our website. So those type of reports will all be available as part of.
Nice, very good. Love that. Thank you. Okay, back to the board.
Okay, education will be in this one, October fifteenth, but last micro column. Education committee, we did the October fifteenth. Last week, the professional learning committee met, um, I have a video on hand, it was September twenty-fifth, I believe. And so we had two topics for the agenda, one being our board goals and the second was strategic planning. So first topic, the board goals. If you recall, we did a word, and this is incorrect time, where we look and talk about different things, a number, number of activities over the week. And we got that input from the board, thank you all for your input. The next step was when we got together, we looked at some of those phrases. Mr. Preston was able to take and like turn it, set little sentences from it, so we started crafting, um, board goals around the feedback. And then we actually decided, and Mr. Preston realized, we had turned, did this already in our January retreat. Remember, we had our homework and we got together in groups and we looked at the discussions. So we kind of took what we had already done and limited it with the input and the feedback that came up during our session, our session last month. And so, um, are we going to project it on the screen or?
But.
No, I don't care. So then we'll, this is what we did, we put together. More input and discussion and feedback.
For these, uh, meaning to extend all of your email, so if you have any, you might prepare that, you know, pitches in on the screen as you see that.
For roles, governance, board leadership, learner success and plans. No, I'm. Mr. President, Marianne, the public, the purpose of the.
I mean, I might be mic, but, uh. Governance, ensure the scope and use of data is filtered to focus on learner success while continuing to use quantitative and qualitative data to better understand the progress of all learners and their growth as individuals. Board leadership, sustain a board district leadership culture of cohesion through a commitment to a collaborative and transparent partnership, which relies on the board code practices hyperlived as its foundation. Alumni success, to enhance through policy oversight, all learning priorities through a foundation of personalized learning, learner ownership, and goal aligned to learner growth. Finance, preserve educational priorities through fiscally responsible governance and diligent budgeting.
I think there is a mention that the board goes back to something that was figured out by this board a while ago, and in past years, the committee referred to development, and it constantly called currentations to new board members, as well as codification of some of the best practices by board members and their prospective goals. And it's a working process.
Yes, it is.
So, and it kind of sets us apart, I think, from most boards, I would go back to my school board, liaison, some sort of feedback on that, but I don't know if any other board is able to use such time to codify some of that. And so I can grab it for.
Scrolling through those, they're the same document, sir, so.
Yeah, that's my.
Not immediately.
They're there for you, they were stuck to you, I think. I mean, this is a lot of governance, a lot of consideration, which is one.
And those practices, and like you said, we did a lot of that work in that January retreat, but those come from that performance student achievement.
Correct.
We also mentioned that that vision, I don't think I mentioned that, we're going to take the board vision edition and place that on our agenda and why it's to be sure that, oh, it's so.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Van, for reminding me of that. Bottom portion, I'll stand real quick in time, to the committee member that was watching the board regards to our board vision edition. So what we like, it's a board's pleasure, is that, you know, on our agendas, we have both, we have our board goals in addition to the education vision and mission, so that we're constantly reminded in everything that we do that we're reflecting that original mission.
You mentioned that other boards, and I'll say this, I, I was briefly with a leadership conference, and there were at least three board members here who attended that conference. And from conversations I sit in half with other boards and just listening to people, if there were five percent of the boards throughout the state that have even given thought to the second world, this board is done in making sure that, not the district, but the board itself, in terms of how we work at this table with each other, who would like yours ahead of what other boards are doing?
We, uh, we continue our work, and I think the culture that we built on from past boards who were, as, as, as Melissa pointed out, where we actually felt this board was out to codify it and to give us a foundation and future force in years for inspiration, that we probably address a lot of challenges, figuring with this. So, I commend board for his work, and it was an ongoing process, an evolutionary process, it won't stop here. Uh, but I think this is on the table tonight for discussion and adoption directly. So I, I think, do you want to move that up now since you're in a little in the committee, or do you want to table that for another session later, because we're on the topic? We may have to, you know, move that for a superior assessment.
Yes, so we'd like to hear some.
Thoughts, feedback to the board?
That weren't at the meeting in reference to the goals and.
Yeah, so the, uh, we moved the, um, out of the committee, we moved it out of the pivot discussion now, as opposed to later. So while we're here, working on it, I think the intent is to adopt these goals, they're acceptable to the board, and to implement the, uh, the position, also statements, the vision statement, the mission statement, also, then, it's going out in a fair second. Very emotional, Mr. Bonzi Vani.
A second.
Second by Mr. Thor. Any further discussion on the goals?
Because in our shadow of, of tracking, like the, that we have upon the day and where our goals are, I think.
Good, good. Thank you. Further feedback?
I think it shows good teamwork and how it works all together, and, you know, to be, uh, to be able to see it to show more how much of this board is.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, any other, any further questions on?
Different classifications, um, what we just moved in second, that is, the board goals, we've been in the mission, not the district goals.
No, no, district goals, everybody told me, we're not, we're not acting on them.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I could have done that, thank you. Um, so, yes.
No, I'm just saying, I, I, as I look at it, I see a lot of the flaws that all of us had in your, uh, at the retreat happen this summer, so happy to see how it's all coming together.
Amazing thing, how those retreats, they, uh, they turn into action, they turn into, uh, means that we go from there. So I, I think one of the best aspects of this board's development has been the ability to sit back by anyone and to get a thought and to build a framework of, yeah, they have exchange of ideas, including and welcoming diversion points of view, you know, so that's true. So, uh, thank you. So that will be on the agenda, and you can add it as a.
Yes, if we, again, when you're.
We have the.
Seconding and we've been silent, and we can vote it, or we can give the whole agenda that you put.
That's fine, yes, in our projection, well, after the agenda.
So.
Yeah, just, it was sort of behind us, just to make, assume an approval, just making over so to make sure that that gets updated on the, on the agenda as well as the screen. Thank you very much.
Very good.
So the second part of the agenda when we had a meeting last week was this discussion of the strategic planning. So, um, we all are aware, and should be aware, that October seventeen, Kathy Wankoff is confirmed to come for seven thirty, and start the process pretty much a minute over here of the process. February first and second are our two days where we'll be together as a group, few members involved. Friday is, the Friday is a Friday night and evening, and Saturday is a full day as far as the work session. And then, um, let's just mention that everyone's aware that, but we're really, pretty much starting that, Mr. Isola had put together information for the committee about here's pass, strategic planning and some previous postures. And so then the process will start, so Mr. Isola.
I believe you need also to appoint a coordinator?
Yes.
Yeah, the next, well, the next agenda for approval is the appointment of Mr. Preston to be our coordinator, who has been historically positioned as, kind of does that for us upon this one plus visit on seventeen. We'll have our, uh, communication ready to go for the next morning, so all those wheels are in motion and, um, we, you know, we're excited to be able to launch this and, you know, come February, uh, we'll be ready to go, so.
It's a massive community interaction, and it's something that needs a lot of groundwork and prep work, so I think if we're getting started now, then we're going to be proactive. Uh, and so, yeah, I, I think it's very.
So also to just so that the committee is aware, for, we've used school boards for all of our strategic planning over the years. In fact, this one caused us the postal challenge for strategic planning, and the first, I'm still have the districts who are going through that process. So just so everyone's aware, the cost of that process, meaning October seventeen meeting, February first and second is three thousand hours.
That's a much reduced rate of the normal strategic planning process, because, you know, at the end of the day, we, we are in the new plan, but it's more of a deal off of the old drive. And in addition, we're very pleased to partner with school boards, which is being driven by our district and partnership then as a resource and support. But again, this is something that we're going to need input from the community, we'll be reaching out to folks who have interest. Uh, this is something that you'll see more and more communication, and I encourage the public to pay close attention, and if you have interest and you think that makes sense, we certainly look forward to seeing the folks that already demonstrated interest in service based on committees and then all the assets to, uh, not the. Thank you, good work. Mr. Bonzi Vani?
Community interaction, we'll have a meeting Tuesday night at seven o'clock. I'd like to, thank Mr. Isola for having this staff change the time originally, we scheduled for five, but having talked with some of the other members of the committee, we realized that that really will be worth it. So I know it means staff coming out to participate in that meeting, so we're appreciative of the fact that they will move to seven. Uh, it's, it's a full agenda for, for that meeting. Typically, that's an hour long meeting. I have no idea if we're going to be able to keep it all within an hour, but certainly a number of the things that we've heard here tonight about the solar initiative, the calendar, uh, what we're going to share, uh, on our different, um, interactive, whether it's YouTube, whether it's Facebook, how we're going to share, what we're going to share, that's on the topic. The, uh, strategic planning will be mentioned at that meeting, again, you know, over the guest that you've mentioned, we've had over sixty people participating each time have done that. So it is something for, you know, students, community, staff, everybody who's had an interest in, in really coming out and participating in that, how do we set a direction for the decision for the next five years? So we're looking forward to that.
Mark, I'll say where that is before.
It, it's a rare.
No schools.
No schools have it seven o'clock, uh, on Tuesday. Two things, two things real quick, I'm, I guess, just on a personal note, Dr. Vani. One is that we often talk about the success of this district and how it's looked at by other districts, and I think it once again shows that two different sessions that were proposed by our administration for New Jersey workshop, we're accepting they're being held down in Atlantic City. There are districts that, again, from experience, I had worked there for some time, years ago, there's some districts that never had the opportunity, uh, this year, once again, we were chosen for two, and the guests have done even more than that. So congratulations from Mr. Isola on that, and Andy Sol's staff. Uh, the other thing is, I noticed I said silly, I know that we have some education students here tonight, uh, I'd like to wish you good luck in your career, and the kind of stuff that you're hearing talked about at this meeting tonight is why when you become teachers, you want to work in this district. There's no better district than this.
But, 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 but,[1799.12]
line, you see on the market. I say, hopefully, but hopefully it takes votes.
Will we feed to that?
I'm on the pasta station.
If we have a forum on the board, it's not actually a debate. Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller?
Finance meeting has not yet, but we'll be meeting very shortly because we need to start our budget planning for next year. I did attend, like I said, before the New Jersey School Board Association County Association Leadership Meeting on September 27th. We did, like I said, speak of school consolidation, I won't finish that. There is a bill to decrease chapter 78 rates, not that it will affect our district. Numerous districts statewide have applied for the emergency aid that was cut from the S2 bill and no decisions have been made of the amount that's been put inside all the procedures of the approval yet. There's a bill that all Board of Ed and Council meetings, such as committee meetings, will need to be videotaped and that is sitting in the Assembly Appropriations Committee. There's also a bill for depression screenings for seventh to twelfth years and that is also sitting in the Senate Appropriations Committee. On October 9th, from six to nine at Charlie Robbins and Lakewood, Ocean Township, Ocean County School Board Association is hosting School Funding 2019 Changes, Options, and Actions Program. So if anyone's interested, Mr. George can sign us up for that. And on October 11th, from six to nine, Monty County School Woods is hosting our first meeting and our topic is future rate. On, we know October 22nd, 25th, the Jersey School Boys holding their workshop. We have a few teams from middle school staff, I believe, competing in the Army's theme type as well as initiatives in two different workshop programs and our twelve schools will receive their future rate certification awards and will receive their sustainable schools energy recognition. I got that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and thank you, my brother, last year.
Can I ask?
Yes.
I'm not sure, Mr. Miller, if you indicated to talk about the appeal process for the emergency leave. I think it's one for our community to know that we're one of five districts all along the county that put an appeal in. We felt it was, it would be negligent not to give somebody some of the deficit that or the cut that we're facing and I felt the commitment to approach that with the greatest level of support for recouping any amount of money that has been taken away for this budget cycle. That is under review. I know they're looking at it as the accident, so classification is tough, so it is re-reviewed, but this community should know that our administration, as directed by the board, saw relief from those budget reductions that we experienced early this year.
And I think, again, we take for granted the fact that because we have such a strong fiscal position based on years of long-term planning, we were able to accommodate that without the custom service and the program. But it is incumbent upon us to make sure that we seek every avenue and get resources for our kids, so I, I would say, thank you. Okay, thanks again, Mr. Miller. Miss Nagano, anything new coming up or in the future?
I'm waiting for you to make that point.
Right, we have, we're a long overdue. I know it's been a busy summer, lots going on, but I think now that we're getting back to the full swing of things, I'd like to see if we can get over the next four weeks a sit-down with the township to continue the work that we talked about further. So, Miss Sanzac, if you're convenient, if you can schedule something with Miss Nagano and myself, Bob DeMai, for example, the township and her team, that'd be very helpful. Thank you, Miss Nagano. I agree, concludes our committee engagement for six. Very good.
It's now time for the first public comment. Whereas the halftime the board indicates in the center of comments from the public may last twenty-five minutes, the next comments will be conducted in accordance with its final order, one six four point one, and individual measure limited to three minutes each. The officer would respect the time. The former will be the president of the board, Mr. Timothy O'Brien, and the floor will be open.
Please.
Are there comments from the public at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
Please state the name and address on the microphone and address your comments.
Hi, I'm Betty Cross. Those who want to give any handouts for tonight of, for the agenda with the attachments?
I believe that we usually provide our copy.
There was a small number on the table, the board has on paperless, except for my desk, as you can tell, and it is available on our website and it's active and it's up on the screen.
I was trying, I did print that off, but I didn't get the shared services contract for the Wal Township bus contract.
I believe that's available through our website, Mr. Sanzac, and we have copies of that.
The agreement is not going to back up until you file a procedure tonight.
Right.
Or is that your side?
Yes.
Society will be a public document?
Right, so it will be made available after the next meeting.
But have I, have I, if I had some questions, I don't know what the questions are, but I didn't have a copy of it.
Ma'am, before we go any further, if you might just say your name and address for the record.
Betty Cross, I live in Wal Township.
Welcome.
Okay, thanks.
This is public comment, ma'am, it's not, I think we're at a dialogue.
Okay, well, maybe you just get back to me, I'm just going to give you a bunch of questions.
I would suggest what we do, if you'd like, if you direct your questions to Mr. Sanzac, I'm sure we'll get back to you in a minute.
Okay, I was just wondering if you could go over, you can't do it now, if you could just get back to me of when Wal Township approached you or when you approached Wal Township about the bus compound situation? And if anything was in writing and who came from Wal Township? Did you email over the contract, who drafted the contract, was it your attorney, was it yourself? Were there various versions of the contract? And did you get any phone calls directly from anyone from the Wal Township Board of Education?
Now, my answer is one thing, that there's also dialogue between various business administrators around the district and of course that dialogue is often opportunities to talk about different ways to save the taxpayer money to share services and improve facilities and services. That's part of this process. I'm sure Mr. Sanzac will provide, will provide you any relevant information to answer any questions like that.
Yeah, I just want to know, what did you, what have you budgeted in terms of revenue coming in from Wal Township? I know it's $4,200 a month, but I'm wondering.
Again, Mr. Sanzac, we're happy to provide all that information to you once we have an executive meeting.
I know, but I mean, how would you know to approve it if you didn't have answers to these questions yet? I mean, how much revenue is, how much township do we get from? And I know your state is a little over $500,000, so I'm just wondering what, you know, what you're budgeting because I'm not sure what we're budgeting in terms of what we're paying. So I was just wondering, what are you budgeting getting in from Wal or are we paying the gas and electric ourselves? What are you budgeting for capital improvements, for the fence, for the paving, for the lights? What if you budgeted yourself in your budget for capital improvements? When did you talk to your transportation department and tell them about what was taking place?
If I might, we'd be happy, again, to provide that information.
Can I just open my questions and then you can?
And this is public comment, if you feel that's what you want to do, but the questions are not going to be answered.
I realize that, I'd like to get my questions on the record and I'm hoping that maybe if you don't have the answers to them now, that maybe you shouldn't be voting on it. That's, that's what I, I would just like to get some type of feedback back. Wondering if anybody from the Wal Township Board of Ed reached out to you regarding any questions regarding the contract or the location, if anybody from the Wal Township Board of Ed actually visited the location? Have you received any calls from the Wal Township Board of Ed attorney? Are there any water issues in your parking lot that, you know, things that maybe could be fixed in order to have the Wal Township employees walk on the land? You mentioned that you could plow your snow first, you know, what does that mean in terms of wall? I mean, could we have late openings? You mentioned that our calendar was the same when it, when it isn't. Our calendar is not the same as yours. I did go and look at it, so are you requesting that Wal Township now change our calendar next year to be the same as your calendar? And I would just like to know if there were any notes, pictures, feasibility studies, anything that was shared with Wal Township? Thank you, I thought your comments were very good when you did your operations, I thought that was excellent. And then, I was very interested in what you're talking about, that wand system too, so I'll look back at your minutes on that for the busing. Are you able to tell how many kids are actually on the bus at any given day, at any given point, how many get picked up and how many get dropped off? I'd be interested in knowing that as well, if that system does that. I would also like to know, do you have a grant writer? Do you specifically need a grant writer? But I've been impressed with everything I've heard so far since I'm here tonight and just being that I'm from Wal, I would like to have some answers to these questions. And I think that's all I have. So, I mean, before you vote on it, I mean, I would think that you'd want to know the answers to these questions yourselves.
Thank you, ma'am. We certainly appreciate and will be happy if Mr. Sanzac will reply back to you with appropriate answers and to answer your question on voting. The board exercises due diligence as we look at the issue very closely. We appreciate your questions, hope that we can get that information to you. Welcome to Wal, you know, we're not a guest.
But you don't have a copy of that shared services agreement, like, that the public can see before you vote on it?
We do not.
Here's my card. Were your statements prepared and do you want me to take that?
No, I just wanted to.
Oh, okay, all right, I'll take it for it.
Okay, thanks.
Additional comments at this time? Seeing none, certainly it will be closed. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Just a clarification, Mr. Miller planned something, I think. The board has reviewed all documents, felt that any decision made, but they're not public documents and therefore they have to be something that would be out of phase or for the public to do yet. This board is a deliberate body in appropriate form, has reviewed all information and makes decisions based on that feasibility.
If I may add to that, it was reviewed and was handed out, collected back and drafted at the operations committee and it is, the motion tonight is as recommended by the operations committee.
And that was a public meeting, so there was an opportunity there, but again, it's not yet been approved, so therefore.
Could you just walk and move approach two? Did you approach all or all approach two? That's what I was wondering.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, that's, at the end of the day, we will continue our meeting now, but we appreciate your questions and certainly Mr. Sanzac will get them to you. Thank you. All right, I believe seeing no further comments, it's closed.
It will be closed. Yes, it's now time for, I believe we cleared the discussion items, so we can.
Yes, we did.
And it is now time for consent agenda and with two and dead items, sir.
That's right.
With your permission, A1, once the board goals, as we discussed earlier during community reports, A2, is having the second extension, approve the agreement with the HDEA for the provision of compensation for sick days for the food service workers who need certain terms of employment in years of service.
Right, absolutely.
With that, start the consent agenda along with A1 and A2.
It's on the table on the motion.
Move.
Moving, all right. Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Ms. Mallon. Can you figure all around?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes, with one exception, $3,000 if I.
Thank you, Dr. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayhem?
Yes.
Mrs. Oakerson?
Yes.
Mr. Thiller?
Yes.
Mr. Buzbani?
Yes, but I presume it's up on $3,013 and $3,003.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
The consent agenda and the two and dead items are approved. Nine votes in favor, none opposed, with the abstentions and absensions voted for the record.
Thank you. You're up to, I said.
The next public comment. It's now time for the second public comment, whereas the halftime the board agrees in general comments that the public may last forty-five minutes and they will be conducted in accordance with its final order, one six four point one. The individuals may be asked to make limited, three minutes each. The president, once again, will be in charge of the time and the court. Make the floor be open, sir.
Please.
Are there additional comments at this time?
Do you have a speaker?
Betty Cross on Wal Township. I mean, I took the time after being here tonight, so I mean, I think a pretty basic question is, that should be able to be answered, is who approached two with the bus compound? Wal's been looking at locations for nine months and inquiring minds are wondering just who approached two. So I think, I think we're due that and I took the time to come here tonight, so I hope that we could just get that on the record tonight.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to disappoint you, but as I pointed out earlier, we, this is public comment, not a question and answer session, and I've already directed Mr. Sanzac to answer all of our questions for you. He will take time out tomorrow to make sure that he's able to give you any pertinent information that is available.
But why couldn't he answer it tonight on marker?
I've already said that, ma'am.
I missed that, what was the original, couldn't?
Public comment, I've directed our business administrator to respond to you and to give you that information, this is not the forum for that discussion.
So do I have to write him tomorrow or he wrote everything down and he's just going to write me tomorrow?
It would be helpful if you want to send him a list of your questions and I'm sure we're asking.
If you have to list written down as I asked previously, or if I have to have my card, you can call me more, more than that before.
I just think it's odd that he wouldn't go over tonight with people here asking the question.
Long accepted practice here, ma'am, this is public.
You don't, you don't answer any questions ever from anyone from the public that comes out?
There have been certainly set points where we have engaged in a public hearing, that's a different forum, this is public. But we are very willing and able to have our professionals reach out to you and answer those questions for you, right?
All right, I'll look forward to answers in writing tomorrow. I'm disappointed.
And they may or may not be in writing, but Mr. Sanzac will certainly respond back to you with information.
Well, I prefer them in writing. I mean, how else?
If you can't access information, I'll leave a question.
Okay, I'll leave it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Seeing none, sir?
Close the floor.
Close the floor.
Move it.
Back. For Mr. Jarrett, thank you very much.